Good evening. I am Mayor Donald T. Lopez, Village of Los Ranchos to Albuquerque, and I am calling the special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. The time is 7:00 PM. I am going to read a number of things before we get started with the agenda. To remain in compliance with the State of New Mexico's Public Health Order dated March 23, 2020, announcing further restrictions regarding mass gatherings due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Village of Los Ranchos to Albuquerque is live streaming this meeting on its Facebook page through Zoom video conferencing, and participants can join via telephonically. The instructions on how to participate in this meeting have been posted on the Village website for public participation. Before the meeting continues, I would briefly like to go over a few video conferencing reminders. If the meeting is disrupted, the meeting will be suspended until the technical difficulties are resolved. If the meeting is disrupted longer than 30 minutes, notice of the reconvened meeting will be posted on the Village website with the time the meeting will be reconvening and updated viewing information. In the event the meeting is disrupted and you would like to be notified directly, please provide your name, address, and email to dmolina@losranchosnm.gov. You will be contacted as to how to reconnect to the meeting. All members of the governing body must identify themselves prior to speaking. All members of the public must identify themselves prior to speaking. Please allow the individual speaking to finish prior to speaking in order to prevent speakers taking over each other. The staff has the right to remove individuals from the meeting for poor etiquette, excessive noise, or any behavior deemed inappropriate. At this time, I will call the roll. Mayor Protem, Trustee Rayel.
Here.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Pacheco.
Here.
Trustee Ricabini.
Here.
At this time, I will move to item three and ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moving through all of the agenda.
I need a second.
I second. I second.
Any discussion? If none, I call for the question. This will be a roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. I will now move to the public comment period. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Participants will also be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items for the open session as they come up. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting can be read, however, there are none that were received in time. Those participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three-minute time. We have one individual who wants to speak at this time. Mr. Joe Craig, please state your name and address. Are you there? Mr. Joe Craig, are you there? It appears that he may not be on even though he is shown as a participant. If he comes on.
Mayor, give it one second here. We're trying to get him on right now. If you can give one second. Mr. Craig, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, trustees. This is a little different format than I've normally seen in Zoom, so.
Okay, Joe, state your name and address.
Joe Craig, 505 Caillou del Pajito Northwest.
Continue.
My only comment and concern is any violation of the anti-donation clause that could come up with allowing our renters to defer their rental payments. I would imagine you're going to address that, but I believe you stated that August 1st, they would that we're deferring the rents till August 1st, so they would have three months' worth of payments due. Is that correct?
You know, I'm not absolutely completely sure. Ann, do you have any knowledge of how we develop this procedure?
Yes. Mayor, trustees. Thank you for the question, Mr. Craig. We are allowing renters to defer rent for two months. They are allowed to defer for the month of April and the month of May. In June, starting in June, we will amortize their rent for the next seven months.
Continue, Mr. Craig.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ann. I've, as I said, my only, I am in favor of it. My only concern is that we run afoul of the state's anti-donation clause by giving a deferral of the rents.
Okay.
And that's, that's my only comment. I think it's a, it's a, it's a good idea, but we are a municipality governed under the state laws. We, I've done a lot of work under the anti-donation clause, and it's pretty onerous. So that's my only comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. In accordance with the Attorney General's guidance for telephonic and video conferencing meetings, I must now ask, is there anyone else who is on this Zoom meeting who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? If so, please state your name and address. You will have three minutes. Kiko, is anybody else on there, to your knowledge?
There's people on. If you are on and you wish to speak, I need you to click the raise your hand button. That way I can see if you would wish to speak or not.
I'm going to give you one minute to do that, and then I'll have to close the public comment.
Mayor, nobody is indicating that they wish to speak.
Thank you. At this time, I will move to item five, new business. Item 5A, discussion only. Status of the Village of Los Ranchos to Albuquerque financials during the current health emergency, revenues and expenses. I'm going to turn this over to Administrator Ann Simon. Ann?
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Good evening. I wanted to start out by saying that the budget of the Village of Los Ranchos is on sound footing right now. I have, as you know, Tammy Silva is on the line, our CFO, as well as Treasurer Haynes for any specific questions. But what I intend to do tonight is run through three things. I'm going to talk about numbers on the plus side so that you can see that we're actually doing quite well in terms of our revenue. Some ways that we're doing belt tightening, and we'll see some savings in carryover. And then finally, I will run through a forecasting model that Trustee Ricabini helped us put together that will help us prepare our budget for the future. So before I get started, does anybody have any specific questions for me? Okay, well, let me just move forward. First of all, on the plus side, I think since we last met, we've received some additional revenues. You may recall that our small cities grant was budgeted at $175,000. We talked about this in the February meeting. As it turned out, we received $402,515 from the small cities grant. So that was in excess of $227,000 plus. Secondly, we are closing the Fourth Street project and working things out with our contractor and found an unexpected $73,000 credit that we will not have to spend on that project. That was their, the low-impact development system was relocated and downsized, and so we have a savings there. So that's a really good thing. Third, we have some land acquisition avoidance. You may recall for our Village Center project, we were going to buy the Gas Man property, and we had budgeted about $150,000 to buy Gas Man. Our developer does not feel we need to acquire that property, so that money will stay in the budget and will add to the already $459,000 that we have for real property. Fourth, we expect to receive $480,000 from DOT to start Phase 2 of the Fourth Street revitalization project. This was not a legislative appropriation that has been rescinded because of oil and gas revenues being down. This is, in fact, a grant that we applied for last year, came very close to getting, and then ranked number one this year. Maria is talking to DOT right now, and it looks very good that we will get that $480,000. Then we will also have some carryover from the grant we received from DOT for Phase 1 of Fourth Street. So we're looking at about $800,000 to start Phase 2 of the Fourth Street project. Fifth, our storage unit and mobile home rents are doing very well. In March and April, we had 95% rent coming in from the storage units, and 10 out of the 14 mobile home tenants paid for March and April. Now, May might be a different story, but right now, our revenues coming in look pretty good. Does anybody have any questions before I go on to our belt tightening? Okay, well, let me talk about some of the ways that we're planning to. Yes?
This is Alan. Do you know what the balance then with that credit is left on Fourth Street?
So the balance for contractor, for the whole thing.
For the whole thing. What's our?
So outstanding, gosh, I might have to turn it over to Maria. But outstanding, we have it's about four, it's 400,000 outstanding still. Maria, can you confirm that?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. So at this point in time, we have an outstanding balance with, on our contract, of $263,113. That includes a pending change order, number 25, that we're just waiting for Georgia's final review on. Of that amount, we have approximately $37,123 available for reimbursement from NMDOT eligible reimbursement on the $263,000 ballot. So out-of-pocket, Trustee Lewis, it looks like the Village of Los Ranchos amount will be $225,990. If you take all that into consideration, that's, that's the final expense to the Village of Los Ranchos at closeout of the project. We are working with the $900,000 NMDOT state legislative appropriation from last year. After the $37,123 reimbursement at closeout and including the $533,582 that we've been reimbursed to date, we will have a balance in that grant of $329,295 available for Phase 2. That coupled with the $480,000 that I've been told is secure and we will be receiving gives us $809,295,000 to be budgeted for Phase 2.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ann. Any other questions?
Okay, great. Okay, moving on. Our belt tightening. We went through the budget, line item by line item. We have suspended travel and training. We have looked at equipment purchases that we can hold off on. We have frozen supply purchases. We have really looked at ways to save, and we have come up with we have come up with $291,268 in savings. These are line items that we feel that we can safely and while still serving the village residents, we can carry forward till next year. I'm happy to go over some of the line items. The, one of the biggest one was in the planning and zoning. We had an FTE for a planner that we have not filled, and we were able to hire a more junior staff to fill the director job. So we had some salary savings in P and Z. We also bought a $26,000 street sweeper where we had $43,000 budgeted. We found one, a used one up in Colorado. So we have some savings like that that we've kind of highlighted, and we feel real comfortable that on first blush, we can save $291,268 out of, out of our budget. Now, I want to have you park this number. When we look at the overall budget, that's about a, an 8.3% savings. So keep the 8.3% in mind because we are going to talk about Trustee Ricabini's forecasting model here shortly. Does anybody have any questions for me before we go on in our belt tightening measures? No? Okay. All right, so third, we are, thank you to Trustee Ricabini, who did a wonderful job putting together some historical revenue numbers and then projecting out three months, the last three months of fiscal year 20, and then helping us forecast 2021. We had been looking for some guidance from DFA and, and other sources to help us understand how we could get a sense of our GRT, and nobody was really helping us. So thank you very much, Trustee Ricabini, for stepping forward.
Welcome.
Do you all have the spreadsheets in front of you? We're talking about the historical, actual GRT?
Yes.
Excellent. I think what we are going to do is we are going to use these graphs to help us all understand where we are with GRT from now on. Tammy feels really comfortable with, with this way of depicting the revenue, and it kind of, as Trustee Ricabini says, it takes the noise out of, out of, out of the graph when you see a nice, smooth line. As you can see on the GRT history, rolling, 12-month rolling, it's a real nice, smooth graph, and it's been rising since 2016. So we were really on a roll until COVID-19 and our crashing world oil prices. But the main thing that I want to point out is if you go to the, to the page that says current and prior year with remaining three months for FY '20 and FY '21 forecast. If you, it looks like this. If you go to that page, you will see that we looked at, from 2019 to 2020, we looked at every month, and we compared the GRT revenue to what we received the prior year in the same month. And when you look at April, May, and June, you'll see there's a blue box. And April, May, and June looks to take a big hit. Overall, the model that, that you're seeing here projects an 11% decline in revenues for 2020. Already, we have found 8.3% in savings. So with a little bit more digging, we can, if we need to, find additional places to save. We'll have to. But I'm not, I'm not worried. Moving to 2021, you'll see at the end, at the bottom of the 2021 column, we are projected to lose 14% of our revenue. That would mean we would have a budget of about $3 million. 14% is about $488,415. So we would, if we were going to follow these numbers, and we will be tracking them, we will put a budget together for 2021 with assuming $3 million in revenue. So it's been very, very helpful to have these charts in front of us, and we'll be using them as we move forward. Does anybody have any questions of me or Trustee Ricabini? Or, or Trustee Ricabini, do you have any comments about the way I presented the information?
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, just briefly, I, I want to make a correction. I'm showing, just so everybody understands that, that essentially what we did was we projected a 40% decrease or a 60% decrease for the month of April based on March, the COVID coming in at the beginning, a little bit. We had a couple of good, a week or two anyway, that was pretty good. So, so then in May, we projected an 80% decrease. In June, what we did was we added up, we added 20% to the, to the an increase on the decrease per month until we actually leveled out in February of 2021. So whether or not these are true or not, they may be very conservative, or they, or the reverse. So we really don't know until we, till we see how quickly this comes back. But right now, we're planning on, on about 20% per month. When you get down to the bottom of 2021, and we are basically, then, we're looking, if you look at 2019, we're just pulling those numbers straight across from 2019. The reason for the big increases from '21 to '20, of course, is because we show the decreases in the light blue box. But we have, I don't show $3 million in income coming in in 2021 on this. This is showing 2.23 million in income coming in, not 3 million.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. And so I think that's going to be important to put a budget together that takes into consideration a slow comeback. I hope it comes back quicker. Oh, I think we all do. And let's see what happens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Nancy.
I would just like to comment that we may fare a little bit better this year in the grocery receipts because there is a two-month lag. For example, March sales would not be coming in until May. So therefore, our April grocery receipts should be better, and May might still be even a little bit better. So we might have a little bit more in grocery receipts tax than we show here, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. And Mayor and Trustee Ricabini, we, we just got the April number, or sorry, we just got the, the February number, which is significantly higher than the 94,216 that you predicted.
What is it?
It's 217,389.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was referring to. Yeah.
So let's just put that in and see what happens.
So that, that number is February grocery? Yes.
Exactly.
So that's down 70,000 from 2019. Am I reading that right? Yes, pretty close. No, well, yes, I'm not sure because it shows 235 for April in 2019, and that 235 should have been the February grocery receipts in 2019. I don't know that for sure, but it should have been.
Mayor, trustees, if I can just add a comment. What Nancy's talking about in, Trustee Lewis, what you're seeing, it looks like you're looking at the February number. But what we're talking about is we see February in April. So the way it works with the state is business happens in February, they collect the tax in March, they disperse it to us in April. So you'll want to compare it to the April 2019 line, which is 235,540.
So we're down only $18,000. Correct. Good, good.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Trustee Ricabini, do you want to add anything to this?
No, I'm just, what was that number again, please, that we're going to get?
We, for the February.
For the, what's our April, new April number?
Is 217,289. Mayor?
Yes.
Ann, was that 217,389 or 217,289? 289. No, it's 2. Thank you.
So this is. We are.
Comment. Oh, go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom or Alan.
So that brings it, that brings us to about a 7% decrease if we have a, I moved the 80% drop into May, but what I'm hearing from Nancy is that we potentially even could have a little bit better May coming in.
Correct.
So yeah, right now, that moves our year-end to 20, almost 2.8 million versus 2.3 million. That was a big change right there.
Yes. But what it'll do, Tom, it will change your July of 2021 and your August of 2021 because those will be your May-June numbers. The other thing I wanted to comment on, Ann, is this is just the grocery receipts. You guys have done a great job looking at this. You know, grocery receipts aren't the total budget. That's correct. I think a lot of it's going to have to be looking at, you know, rents, excise tax, gasoline tax, whatever we think, those. excise tax, gasoline tax, whatever we think those projections are going to be also. So you might end up with a $3 million budget. It'll just depend. This is just, you know, the one segment of the budget.
And if I could also remind you all, Mayor and trustees, that when we do get together for our May meeting, however we do it, we'll have three cash reports to approve, February's, March's, and April's. And so we might have a much clearer picture, since this is, a lot of this is conjecture.
So just to recap, real quick, excuse me, Mayor, this is Tom. In April, 216, 697 coming in, that's 8% from last year's drop. May, I went ahead and moved the, what we had in a minus 40%, I moved it down to May, just for kicks, and brought in 162. And then in June is where we really take a big drop, down to only 20% income coming in. That puts us at a minus, minus, it puts us at minus 3% or 2.85, 2,000, 2,885,000 or $103,000 drop for 2020. So that's a lot better shape right there. And then we carried forward the 20% rise from there. And 2021 now comes in at 2.1 million in total revenue for the year in 2021, which is, let's see, that's, that carried, what it did is it carried those drops further into 2021. So depends on how fast it comes back, but we could have a horrible 2021 because of it.
Sure.
So right now, I'm showing 26% decrease in 2021, which is huge.
Any further comments from the other trustees? Mayor Protem, Trustee Rael, do you have any comments on this?
No, I'm fine with this. Then you did a good job in putting this together. And then the changes we made, we got a better idea of what's going on.
Trustee Lewis, anything else?
I just would like to say, Mayor and Anne, you've done a tremendous job looking at this and preparing, I think, the village for some very lean months to come. And I congratulate you on the job you're doing.
Thank you. Trustee Pacheco, any comments?
I just want to thank Tom for putting this together and Anne, you know, just looking at trimming wherever we can is going to be critical, obviously, and it looks like you're doing a great job in looking at that. I'm hoping that we can all also look at ways to stimulate the spending in the village in the future. I know right now, everything is shut down and, you know, we really can't see what the future holds for us, but I'm hoping that we can come up with some creative ideas on how we can, you know, help our businesses within the village and hopefully, you know, get things back on track sooner rather than later.
Mayor, I'd like to have one comment myself, please.
Go ahead.
The, I think it's important, from what I just heard from Anne, even if we came in under, you know, we have less of a loss in 2020 because of the, kind of the delayed GRT.
Right.
I think it's really, really important that we put these savings in place anyway because we need to real, roll them into next year because next year is going to be a tough year if this comes back slow. If we have a, if we fall back into a, what do they call it, kind of a secondary hit that we've been talking about, then it's going to even get worse. So we really need to tighten our belts up the rest of this year and then early on in next year, I think we need to be thinking about a budget that is a lot tighter for next year, early.
Very good.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
May I make a few comments?
Of course.
So I agree that the village is in a very strong cash position at this point in time. And I think our biggest challenge is to protect this leverage, our employees and the safety of our village residents as well. That we need to take immediate measures to sustain and preserve our financial position because if we don't start now, a year from now, we're going to be really, depending on, you know, the villages and village businesses, are they able to come back even? Some of them probably were borderline to begin with and with this, it's going to be a really tough road for them. So I would surely encourage trying to really spend only essential money for expenses. I wanted to point out that our employee costs are like 1.4 million. So that takes a lot right off the top. We have our reserve fund that we cannot use our cash and that is, let's see, 1 million, 1.4 million. So that's a lot of cash right off the top as well. So we have to take that into consideration. The other thing I wanted to point out was interest income with our funds that we have invested in the local government investment pool. Those interest rates have decreased significantly. And just to give you an idea, February of 2019, the net yield was 2.345% and today it's 0.678%. So that's another source of revenue that we're going to see a decrease on. So again, I would have a, you know, best-case scenario budget and a worst-case scenario budget and really try to go on the worst-case scenario until we can figure out what's happening in the village. Because like I said, it's, we all need to rise to this occasion and make sacrifices and look for opportunities and ways to better work together so that we do preserve that financial position for the village.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
I think we're done with this part of the agenda unless somebody else wants to say something. So we're going to now move to 5B. Discussion and Approval, Resolution Number 2020-04-01, Consent to the State of Emergency Declaration in Response to COVID-19. I will take this. On April 15th, I issued a declaration of emergency in response to COVID-19. I'm going to read it because it won't take that long. "Today, I am issuing a declaration of emergency for the Village of Los ranchos to assure preparedness for and in order to respond to the COVID-19 global pandemic. The order follows that of New Mexico Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham's Executive Order 2020-004, Executive Order 2020-004, declaring a state of public health emergency and invoking the powers by the All-Hazard Emergency Management Act, NMSA 1978, subsections 12-10-1 through 12-10-10, for a minimum period of 30 days, which Executive Order 2020-004 was renewed and extended to April 30th, 2020. I now understand that will be May 15th, 2020. Village of Los ranchos ordinance, Chapter 4, Public Safety and Emergency Management, Article 1, Section 2, 4-1-2 (C), gives the mayor power to declare a local state of emergency with consent of the Board of Trustees. This declaration is hereby in effect beginning today, which was April 15th, 2020, and will remain in effect for as long as that of Executive Order 2020-004 and all extensions of that order. This declaration is now being presented to the Board of Trustees in the form of a resolution to provide consent. That resolution was a part of your packet and is very clear to everybody. So unless somebody would like to ask a question about it, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this resolution."
Motion approved.
Second.
Need a second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I assume now we're going to have to go into the village hall to sign it. Is that correct?
Either that or you have three days to sign it. I could send somebody to your place of residence and ask you to sign it that way if you feel more comfortable that way. It's up to each trustee to decide.
Yeah, I would prefer that.
We'll do it. We'll take care of it. Any other questions, any other discussion on this resolution?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have one question. Can you just explain a little bit about what this resolution, this declaration entitles the village to?
The bottom line is Department of Homeland Security is recommending that communities throughout New Mexico declare a state of emergency for the purpose of being able to obtain future funds that may come as a result of the COVID-19 expenses that any community has. New Mexico, some communities have significant expenses. The village does not yet. But that doesn't mean that we never will have an expense that we can get reimbursed for. So we're trying to be proactive and we're trying to follow the guidance from our state government to basically be consistent. And I think the idea is for every community to declare an emergency. Obviously, you don't have to, but in my opinion, it should happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? I'm going to call for the question with a roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Rick Abini?
Yes.
The resolution passes, the trustees have three days to sign. And as I indicated to you, Mayor Protem and Trustee Rael, we will get this to you so you can sign it. The next regular, did somebody say something? "The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. However, depending upon stay-at-home orders or limited openings and access to services, please check the website for changes and updates. Because of the governor's today order to extend the stay-at-home order to May 15th, we will have another meeting exactly like this one, a teleconference video Zoom meeting, which I think went very well." I am going to adjourn the meeting now. It is 7:42 PM, April 22nd. I need a motion. I make a motion to adjourn? I need a second.
Second.
I don't need a roll call for this. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.